Mr. Ballard.
Here.
Mr. Cunningham.
Here.
Mr. Taylor.
Present.
Mr. Elliott.
Here.
Mr. Hilsinger.
Here. So we have five, uh, we need a motion to accept the, uh, minutes from the executive meeting of January twenty fourth.
Make a motion to approve those minutes.
My second.
Discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, I have it five zero. Uh, we have no statute sheet, no committee reports. We've got a first new business item, which is PC thirty-one dash twenty-one San Luis County Planning Commission. And this is on the zoning ordinance.
Uh, this is.
For electric vehicles.
Yes, this is Debbie Solberg. Uh, this is an amendment to this. This is an amendment to the zoning ordinance pertaining to electric vehicle charging. We are recommending approval. The electric charging code requires a certain number of electric vehicle supply equipment spaces and a certain number of electric vehicle ready parking spaces that, uh, for, for parking lots in unincorporated St. Louis County. So our recommend recommendation is to, uh, require that the electrical vehicle, uh, supply equipment spaces and the electric vehicle ready spaces comply with the requirements of section one-one-one-nine, which is the electric vehicle charging code of the revised ordinances of St. Louis County. So we would define those, uh, those terms. Uh, we're also, we looked at the parking section and we're making the recommendation that, um, we would remove the requirement that site plan is required for all vehicle charging stations. Vehicle charging stations normally are, are re, are using existing parking spaces. And while there may be a small kiosk where you can put your credit card in or, 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 or your account number in, there's, these are not considered structures. And so, um, if you're ju, if you're just adding the electric vehicle, uh, ready parking spaces to a, uh, to an existing parking lot, planning would not necessarily see them. When, um, when modifications to existing parking lots trigger requirements for the electric vehicle uh, supply equipment or electric vehicle ready parking spaces, our recommendation is that this would be determined by the Department of Transportation and Public Works. Planning will see all new parking lot plans. And we would require electric vehicle ready and electric vehicle, um, parking spaces to be shown on the site plans. However, the electric vehicle charging code further goes on to specify that any time a parking lot is resurfaced or remodeling occurs to an existing building or a change of use to that building, it would trigger the requirements of the electric vehicle, uh, ready and electric vehicle, um, supply, uh, electric vehicle parking spaces. And planning normally does not see plans when someone is restriping a parking lot or, um, or if, if the building modification doesn't expand the footprint of the existing building. So our recommendation is to make some small tweaks to the zoning ordinance, adding the definitions, not requiring a site plan and stating that all parking lots need to be compliant with section one-one-one-nine Electric Vehicle Charging Code of the Revised Ordinances.
Okay, uh, we need a motion.
I, I have a question, Wayne. I read something the state legislature struck this down.
My understanding is that a bill has been introduced, but that doesn't, but they, but the bill's not, not been passed or anything yet.
Okay, that's, that's it then, uh.
And obviously we wouldn't, you know, I mean, the state would trump, uh, would trump us. But, but the planning department's charge was to respond to the electric vehicle charging code that was adopted by the county council.
Debbie, a question here also. Who would, uh, uh, would the DOT be responsible for monitoring all those things since we're not going to see the site plans in the future?
Yes, yes, they would be, they would be responsible. I mean, they're the ones that are going to, uh, coordinate the issuance of any electrical permits or, or mechanical, any, any kind of permits that are required to make a parking space, uh, to wire a parking space for electric vehicle charging. So they would see the, they would see the plans for existing modifications to existing parking lots where the planning department would not be involved.
Okay.
So they would have, uh, say as to where these stations would go on a parking lot?
Well, the electric vehicle charging code says that the parking spaces have to be, um, you know, in a convenient place. Now what that means, I don't know. I was, I'm looking at a new parking lot where they are, um, they're adjacent to the building, but they're not, you know, real close, they're not real close to the entrance like an accessible parking space for a handicapped person would need to be. You know, but I think the idea with the electric vehicle charging code and that provision in it was that you not end up with them with a mall parking lot, for example, and them as far away from the building as they could possibly be.
That's what they did in Eureka at the Schnook Center. They put them right where you come into the parking lot. They're, they're not close to any building.
But, you know, some, some of that is a, uh, you know, is going to be the, uh, the property owner or the developer's, um, decision.
Yeah, familiar with the one at, uh, Osage Beach at the Hy-Vee grocery store. They've got about eight Tesla stations. And they're not close to the store at all. They're, they're at the far end of the lot.
My recollection is that the, um, that the Tesla parking spaces that, that we had were not necessarily close to the, to the lot either. I think though that as electric vehicles become more prevalent, the consumer will say, I want, these parking spaces be closer to the building. They shouldn't be, you know, as far away from the front entrance as you can get. And I think that the, uh, owner and the developers will, will respond to that. Um, you know, the trend seems to be more and more marketing and I assume purchasing of electric vehicles. And so I think that the demand for these, these type of parking spaces will grow as, um, as the number of electric vehicles on the road increases. And that, uh, developer, uh, the parking, uh, the property owners will understand that they need to make this. They're providing this as, sort of as a service to their customers and that just like everything else, they need to be convenient for the customer.
Just.
Something we're going to learn as we go. I think we'll be making all kinds of modifications to it. Like you say, as these new EVs come onboard, uh, the, uh, demand is going to be, uh, require a different, uh, type of, uh, response.
I've, I've got a question for, for Gary. Gary out there in Eureka at the Schnucks.
Yeah.
Is that uh, electric station they have there, is, does it set up on a curb and have pipe bollards around it for safety?
I believe it does have the pipe bollards. It's on the curb.
That's good.
It's the same as the one over, um, on, uh, Clayton Road.
Clayton.
Yeah. It's the same way. They, they're not very convenient, but I, I believe it's true that as they become more in demand, um, things will change. They'll, they'll make them a little bit more convenient as far as, uh, closer to the bill.
It's a work in process.
Okay, um, we need a motion.
I'll make the motion for approval.
Do we have a second?
Second emotion.
Any further discussion? Seeing no one, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, I have it five zero. Next item is thirty-two dash twenty-one San Luis County Planning Commission. And this is in reference to the floodplain district.
Yes, this is, uh, this is a, a, a text amendment to, uh, zoning ordinance pertaining to regulations that require the seal of a professional engineer or a PE on floodplain development permit applications. Uh, we are recommending, uh, okay, so we have some definitions here. The floodway is the portion of a river or other water course in the adjacent land areas that must be reserved to discharge the base flood without cumulatively rate, increasing the water surface elevation more than one foot. The floodway is, we don't, we don't, we don't allow grading in the floodway. We don't allow development in the floodway. And, um, so you, well, the flood, you take the floodway into consideration with your floodplain study. You're not to mess around with it and not to, you know, not to put dirt in it, not to take dirt out. It's supposed to stay as the nat, you know, the natural water course. Uh, the special flood hazard area also referred to as the hundred-year floodplain or the floodplain is where there is a one percent change in any given year of the land, once chance, not change, in any given year of the land flooding. And the flood fringe, um, also is, it was, was also referred to as the five-hundred-year floodplain where there is a point two percent chance in any given year of the land flooding. So you have the, generally you'll have a wa, a creek or a river that's in the floodway. Then on either side of it, you'll have an area that's the special flood hazard area, which, which we also refer to as the floodplain. And then beyond that, you have the flood fringe. Unless, unless there's a big drop off or a big cliff, but the flood, so if you have a federally insured loan for your home, you have to have flood insurance if your structure is in the special flood hazard area or the floodplain, but you do not, but you're not required, um, for loan underwriting if you're in the flood fringe. So the, the pro, the purpose of this amendment was to allow some flexibility in when a professional engineer had to sign the, um, the, the, had to seal the project. Because all projects that are located within the floodplain or that one percent in a hu, in any given year chance of flooding currently require a PE seal. The amendment that we're looking at today would allow extremely minor work within the floodplain to be exempted from this requirement. For example, if someone was replacing an existing drive, uh, an existing retaining wall or, uh, or expanding their driveway slightly. These exceptions would only be made for minor, very minor projects. All, all work adjacent to the floodway would require the PE seal. And the planning department is not determining when there's an exception. The determination when the exception is appropriate would be made by the Department of Transportation and Public Works who reviews the floodplain study, uh, that is, that is submitted and also reviews any, any grading on, um, on property. So it's, it's just to allow, and there have been requests from utility companies who were making small changes in, um, in property in the floodplain. And there've also been, uh, I mean, this was driven by a request by the Department of Transportation and Public Works. This was not something that planning, um, came up with. But, so we are recommending, so basically what we've said is that, uh, well, there's some changes in the report because the Department of Transportation and Public Works name was not, is not referred to as, as that in the, uh, in the report. It was referred to Department of Highways and Traffic and, I mean, in the current zoning ordinance. And, uh, but basically we're adding as directed in a cup, and, and I think two places in the, um, yeah, two places in the, in the section of the zoning ordinance that has to do with, uh, floodplain zoning.
Okay, we need a motion.
I'll make a motion for approval.
Do we have a second?
Second emotion.
Discussion. Anyone? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, I have it five zero. And next we've got, uh, PC thirty-six dash twenty-one Moto Inc.
Good evening. PC thirty-six dash twenty-one Moto Inc. Is a request for a change in zoning from M-one FPM-one and FPM-three to M-three and FPM-three for a two-point-nine-four acre tract of land on the southeast quadrant of Interstate two-fifty-five and Coke Road. As you recall, this site is in South County, just west of the Jefferson Barracks Bridge to Illinois. Um, on this aerial, you can see the entire parcel as well as the hatched area, which is just the area of the petition. Here's the preliminary site development plan presented at public hearing. The proposed development would utilize the existing curb cut from Coke Road and have a fifty-eight-hundred-square-foot convenience store, ten automobile gas pumps and an automated tunnel car wash. The plan also shows a pole sign on the northwest corner of the site facing I-two-fifty-five and, and a monument sign near the entrance on Coke Road. Lastly, a drive-through window is proposed at the rear of the proposed convenience store. The Sixth County Council District Community Area Study was undertaken to provide planning guidance for South County with the goal of developing a plan for the area's future. The goals of the study include redeveloping vacant or underutilized industrial and commercial sites. The petition is part of Site-ten Coke Road, Coke Hospital, excuse me, which includes the, um, eighty-nine-point-five acres located south of I-two-fifty-five at Coke Road overlooking the Mississippi River. Recommendations for the site include optimizing the potential for recreational, institutional and/or multifamily residential uses. The petition site is also part of Sub-Area Five, south of Jefferson Barracks Bridge. And the recommended uses for Sub-Area Five include, um, port, promoting port and river access and active or passive recreational uses that would take advantage of the topography and river overlook location. Um, and just as a reminder, these are the site, uh, maps for both Site-ten Coke Hospital. You can see the petition site up here. And, uh, Sub-Area Five, south of the Jefferson Barracks Bridge, where you can see the site again. The preliminary site development plan shows a pole sign at the northwest corner of the site, but does not indicate the height of the proposed sign. The petitioner did not note it at public hearing either. The plan shows the pole sign at an elevation of four-hundred-and-thirty-four feet. Um, and county maps indicate that Interstate two-fifty-five is at roughly four-hundred-and-seventy feet and increases moving east towards Jefferson Bear, towards the Jefferson Barrack Bridge at least to four-hundred-and-seventy-six feet. Signs in the industrial districts are limited to fifty square feet in area. In contrast, signs in the C-three or C-four districts can be a hundred and square feet. As the following exhibit shows, to extend to a height visible from the bridge, the sign would extend beyond the permitted maximum height for pole signs in the industrial district of thirty feet. You can see that I've starred the approximate area of the sign. Coming from Illinois, it would have to be almost as high as the advertising signs to be visible from the highway. The department finds that even a thirty-foot-tall pole sign would be out of character and scale with the surrounding area and demonstrates the commercial nature of the proposed use. Um, here we've highlighted some of the preliminary site development plan issues. The first is that MoDOT will not permit an entrance opposite the I-two-fifty-five exit ramp, which would be a little bit north on Coke Road. Um, but the proposed location of the site entrance off Coke Road is in the stream buffer setback from Martigny Creek. And so per the, the zoning ordinance, there would be required a fifty-foot no disturb buffer from the top of the bank plus a twenty-five-foot setback. Additionally, the location of the car wash in the front yard is not permitted, um, per the zoning ordinance section one-zero-zero-three-point-one-six-five. And lastly, no landscaping is shown on the, uh, the submitted preliminary site development plan. The department is recommending denial of this request. The M-three planned industrial procedure can permit commercial uses that are specifically related to a particular industrial activity or complex. However, this request cannot be reasonably tied to any nearby industrial activity or complexes. A standalone gas station is generally considered a commercial use when it is designed to attract non-industrial users such as motorists passing along I-two-fifty-five. Additionally, Coke Road is intended to serve smaller residential, institutional and quarry-related traffic. The proposed development is a high-traffic generating use for a corridor that is not intended for such volume. The commercial node of activity in this area is further west at Telegraph Road. And the department does not recommend introducing commercial-style uses and activity at this interchange. Additionally, the preliminary site development plan is incompatible due to the location of the entrance in the floodplain setback, the car wash in the front yard, the lack of landscaping and the proposed pole sign. So at this time, I'd like to request a motion for denial.
Um, I spoke with Bill Sneed. He's not here this evening. Um, dude is not feeling well, but he did ask that we put this on hold in order to dress, to address some of these issues. So if that's agreeable to the commission, Kim.
Yeah, I'd like to put a motion in for a hold then.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed.
Mr. Hilsinger, I apologize. I was on, I was on mute. Is there further information that the department can, you know, go back to the petitioner and get, is there, is there something specific that staff should be, uh, attempting to address?
I did not get into that with Bill, but, uh, i- it's a pretty extensive report. And I, I think the general feeling was to have a little more time to, to spend with that. And, uh, I, I'm kind of in agreement with, with Bill on this. Sometimes we're not always getting these in a timely fashion with a lot of time to go through them. And, uh, report this size, I think, uh, we can wait a couple of weeks on it to give people more time to go through it.
Okay.
But you did a very thorough job on it. I, you know, not taking away from that.
And Wayne, have you got a question?
Keith?
Yes, um, the property that sits there, does, does the, uh, prospective owner, are they purchasing the whole piece of property all the way over to the bluff?
That is, I believe, correct. They have the whole site under contract, but they're only petitioning for the change on that front three-ish acres.
Okay.
That's my question. Thank you.
Sure.
Okay. Anyone else? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, I have it five zero. And we'll see this again. And then we'll go on to PC oh-one and oh-two dash twenty-two Flower and Finler.
I do see that Mr. Lawler has joined. I'm gonna unmute him. And Mr. Lawler, can you hear us? I don't hear him, but he, he has joined.
Want me to go ahead or, or wait?
Mr. Lawler, can you hear us? I, I suppose go, go ahead.
Okay, uh, before you, good evening, commissioners. Before you, this, this evening is PC oh-one and oh-two dash twenty-two Flower and Finler Inc., uh, which is a request for a change in zoning from R-one and NU to R-one A with the PEU in the R-one A uh, for a nine-point-five acre tract located on the north side of Hawkins Road, approximately two-hundred-and-seventy-seven feet west of Bull's Island. As you'll recall, and you can see again in, in the con, county context map, um, this, uh, petition is located in, in far south, central, southwest, uh, San Luis County, um, just along the, the county line with Jefferson County. And then in the aerial, you can see the subject site outlined in red. And this, uh, closer aerial view, um, again, outlined in red is the subject site. And you can see some of the, the surrounding, uh, land use. Uh, so the preliminary site development plan that, that was submitted by the petitioner um, indicates eighteen single-family detached lots, um, with a minimum lot size of ten-thousand-seven-hundred-and-fifty-two square feet and an average lot size of fourteen-thousand-five-hundred-and-thirty square feet. Um, there's one residential street access, uh, to Hawkins Road proposed, um, that leads to a single subdivision street. Um, there are two common ground areas. They're, they're outlined in green. Um, one at the north end of the site and one, um, abutting Hawkins Road, um, totaling approximately two-point-eight-six acres. Um, in each common ground area, there is a, a single water detention basin, making two, uh, water detention basins across the site in total. Uh, some recommended revisions to the site development plan. Um, the department is recommending maintaining the eighteen single-family detached lots. Uh, however, um, the County Department of Transportation has determined that only one access point will be permitted to Hawkins Road. I mean, as you can see, Lot eighteen, uh, which is outlined in red, um, is not shown as having frontage on the internal subdivision street, um, but rather on Hawkins. And we're recommending revisions to the, the plan, um, to where all lots need to have frontage on the new internal subdivision street due to the, the access control. And addition, a revised site design, um, showing all lots with frontage on the, the internal subdivision street um, can be considered during the site development plan review stage um, and brought before the planning commission for final passage. Um, additionally, some landscaping requirements, um, would be an average of three new trees per lot with a minimum of two new trees per lot, um, due to approximately fifty percent of the existing tree cover, uh, being removed. Um, and then plantings, um, should, are recommended to be, um, installed along lots fourteen through seventeen. Um, you can see sort of, uh, the general, uh, location of where those plantings would, would go in that sort of green box rectangle. Um, the purpose would be to serve as a buffer adjoining, uh, those properties, um, buffer to those adjoining properties. Um, if you'll recall, um, PC thirty-one and thirty-two nineteen, uh, Flower and Finler, this request is, is very similar, um, both in the number of lots and the size of lots. Um, and was also a, a request for, uh, a change in zoning to R-one A with a PEU. So at this time, we are recommending approval. Um, the R-one A twenty-two thousand square foot residence district is a logical extension of the prevailing zoning pattern in the area. Um, additionally, um, you know, in, in the same vein, the single-family detached residences proposed are compatible with surrounding land uses. Um, the PEU procedure gives the county more control over development conditions to ensure compatibility with the surrounding, um, development. Uh, some of the specific conditions of development would include, um, limiting the, the development to eighteen single-family lots. Uh, only the one residential street access, um, requiring Lot eighteen be reoriented, um, to have frontage on that internal subdivision street. Um, extensive landscaping, uh, including the use of Missouri native plants and, and the average of three new trees per lot with a minimum of two new trees per lot. Additionally, um, any proposed monument sign, um, should be rustic in nature to preserve and maintain the similar rural character of the area. So at this time, I would ask for a motion, uh, for approval.
Hey, we need a motion.
I'll make a motion for approval.
Do we have a second? Anyone? We have a second from Mr. Ballard. Discussion?
Yeah, I've got a question on Lot 18. How big is that lot?
Give me one moment. It's the largest lot on the site. Just over 33,000 square feet.
So that's two acres?
It's about 2/3 of an acre.
Just 2/3 of an acre, okay.
Yeah, give or take, yeah.
So is the developer gonna carve that out of there then? Because I don't see a way that they can give them an access without cutting the lot sizes on the other lots.
So County Department of Transportation Station is requiring only one access off of Hawkins. So we're recommending the, I mean, if the developer can revise the site design to accommodate 18 lots, all with frontage on that internal street, the department feels that that sort of revised design can be reviewed during site development plan review. Ultimately, the planning commission would have to approve that design. We, you know, the department feels that 18 lots on this site is appropriate, but we do understand that the County Department of Transportation only wants one access point onto Hawkins Road. And as submitted, the plan shows Lot 18 as, I mean, there isn't a driveway shown, but there's no frontage for Lot 18 onto that internal street. It only has frontage on Hawkins. So that the site would have to be reconfigured. If the developer can reconfigure that in such a way to keep 18 lots, you know, we would review that and consider that if, you know, if it is the case that only 17 lots could be built, you know, that the developer can propose that as well.
I guess the question I'm asking, if they carved that out and sell that individually to somebody else, an individual, would the individual be able to go to the Department of Transportation and get permission to put up?
So that. Go ahead, Jacob.
I'll jump. They won't be able to subdivide the parcel as part of the subdivision with a PEU and just sell off a portion of it as though it's not part of the PEU. The PEU will, excuse me, I apologize. The PEU will encumber the entirety of the parcel. So there's not going to be some sort of backdoor way in which they can just sell that off and then subdivide it off and then get, you know, all 18, that the PEU would encumber this site, this parcel as well. So they have a couple of options, and the commission has a couple of options. Either A, you could, you know, continue with a recommendation of approval, seeing as it is with the conditions in your report, have minimum lot sizes and have minimum lot sizes to control lot size. Or you can request that the petitioner provide for you a new revised preliminary site development plan showing how they would do that. And if they did that, they could show either A, that some of the lots could grow, some of the lots could shrink. It'll be dependent upon what the petitioner can come up with.
What was just approved, do they have to come back and show us how they're going to reorganize this to include that 18th lot?
So if the commission did move forward approving a letter of recommendation, and it was approved and the PEU was issued by the council, then yes, the site development plan does have to come back in front of the commission for ultimate approval.
Thank you, sir.
Hey, anyone else? Seeing none, we have a motion for approval. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. I'm not sure if we've got Steve on the call.
Mr. Lawler, can you hear us? We see you on the list twice, but we're not hearing from you. Mr. Lawler? I think I heard. I hear him now.
There he is.
Did you cast a vote in approval, Mr. Lawler?
Yes, I was having trouble getting on. Yes, I would vote for the approval.
Okay, that approved then 6-0. And then we'll go to old business letters for approval versus PC 25-21 DLJ Lindberg.
So the letter of recommendation in your packet tonight is an approval consistent with what the information report you considered in October and last month in January, the conditions of development in the info report. As written, it would allow the drive-through in the location shown on the preliminary site development plan. In your packet, you also saw a cover memo and two correspondence items from the petitioner. The correspondence dated February 2nd indicates some of the constraints with relocating the drive-through to the rear or side of the parcel, including ensuring that the driver's side of the vehicle is oriented to the building correctly and then where the stacking lanes would be located and ensuring that that stacking doesn't overflow into the access drive here or to Lindberg Boulevard itself. The department recognizes these constraints and left the language as written in the information report. But it is consistent with the approval from January 24th.
And we're leaving the stormwater line alone?
Right, that would be per MSD's standards at time of review.
Okay, okay. We need a motion?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
All our seconds.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Eyes have it 6-0. And we'll go on to PC 34-21 Stephen P. Link and Kathy M. Jaeger.
So this is a letter of recommendation for denial consistent with the commission's intentions from the January executive meeting.
We need a motion?
Motion for denial.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Discussion, anyone? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? You oppose, Keith?
No.
Okay, 6-0?
Yes.
And then we'll go to PC 37-21 Insight Real Estate Investment Properties LLC.
So this is a letter of recommendation for approval consistent with the recommendation of approval from the January executive meeting.
Okay. We need a motion?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
A second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it 6-0. We'll go to correspondence items versus communication from Carolyn Dolan on PC 15-98.
Yes, before you, it's PC 15-98 RG Leasing, which is a request for an amendment to CA Ordinance 18968 for a 0.40-acre tract located on the south side of Lackland Avenue west of Ashby Road. You can see from the county context map, this parcel is located in mid-county. And the aerial shows some of the surrounding land use with the parcel outlined in red. And again, this closer aerial view shows the surrounding land use context with the parcel outlined in red. We are recommending approval this evening. The petitioner is seeking to amend the permitted uses in this CA district. The current permitted uses are uses of HVAC installation business, including pipe and associated parts welding, ductwork manufacturing, and outdoor storage. This permitted use is extremely restrictive and really constrains the site to this sort of single business and prohibits other potential businesses that would be appropriate for this site to occupy the site. So the recommended change to the permitted uses is contractors' office, warehousing, and limited fabrication utilizing welding and sheet metals. This would allow for other potential businesses that would be appropriate to be on the site, to occupy the site. Additionally, there are similar uses to this type in the immediate area. So at this time, we would ask for a motion for approval.
Do we have a motion?
Make a motion for approval.
Do we have a second?
A second.
We have a first and a second. Quick question. Outdoor storage. What are we recommending there?
So the outdoor storage is encompassed by the warehousing, the requirements and the ordinance for outdoor storage to be enclosed and screened would remain.
Okay.
What exactly is the definition of enclosed and screened? Does that mean it's in a garage or is it just fenced?
Find the original.
Here, I've got it, Paul. So right now, it reads, "Outdoor storage of materials and equipment shall be permitted only within covered, fenced, and/or screened areas." So that would be, you know, we would be reacting to whatever is proposed, but I don't believe the petitioner has any plans to increase any outdoor storage on the site at this time. But it gives a few options, but it would be reviewed by the department.
Okay. Anyone else? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it 6-0. And next, we've got Julie Anderson. And this is on PC 10-01 Costco Wholesale.
So this is a request to the governing C-8 ordinance for the Costco Wholesale C-8, which includes the Target store as well on the south side of Lindberg Boulevard, northwest of 255 and I-55. The request is to increase the hours of, oh, if you'd go back to that, Abby. So you can see the red line is the entire C-8, but this request pertains to the Costco Vehicle Fueling Center. So the request is to expand the hours of operation for fuel sales at Costco. Currently, they can dispense fuel from 6:30 a.m. to 9:30 p.m. The proposed hours of operation are 5:30 a.m. to 10 p.m. This is 90 total minutes increased, and the department finds this is relatively minor in nature and reasonable for this use. Additionally, the closest residences to this site are separated from the site by the railroad tracks to the west and then a pretty large vegetative buffer. So we are recommending approval of this ordinance amendment.
Okay, do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Discussion, anyone? They definitely need more time at this location. Got to have the longest gas lines I've ever seen. So all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it 6-0. And then we've got site plans. First one's 11-21.
So this is the, is PC 1121 LHCV3 LLC. This is the Tesson Ridge development on the west side of Tesson Ferry, east of Keller Road, the former General American Life Insurance site. So you can see it here outlined in red. This is the concept plan for purposes of review. This was a request for an MXD mixed-use district, which has sort of a tiered development review process. The concept plan is here before you for the commission's approval. And then subsequently, the developer will submit section plans for each of the planning areas, which would be reviewed and approved by the planning department as per the MXD ordinance. So this is the overall concept plan. I'm gonna walk you through it in sections, starting from the entrance, going in sort of a clockwise motion. So starting at the entrance of the site, you can see the proposed entrance from Tesson Ferry with the commercial planning areas on either side. And the commercial buildings you can see have a relationship not only with Tesson Ferry, but they also orient towards the internal street here. There is a single roundabout leading to the multiple-family portion of the site in Planning Area 3 or the former office building itself. There is also an amphitheater slash playfield near the roundabout. Moving to the south, you can see the southern portion of that commercial planning area as well as Planning Area 2, which is the attached single-family homes. And then this sort of boxed-out portion is an existing multiple-family development and the QuickTrip that are on Tesson Ferry and Britton Road. You can see that planning area for the single-family detached homes actually wrap around and come out and terminate in a cul-de-sac here, close to Britton Road. They are showing it terminating in a cul-de-sac, but they're also showing some right-of-way dedication to Britton Road. And then outlined, the line in green shows a pedestrian path that's shown to connect Planning Area 2 or the Villas to the existing trail around the lake. Moving to the west, you can see more of the single-family detached residences. And additionally, some of the stormwater infrastructure that will facilitate, continue to facilitate the use of the lake for stormwater management. There's also a pedestrian connection from Planning Area 4 to the existing lake trail as well here. Moving back to the north, you can see basically the remainder of the single-family detached residences in Planning Area 4 as well as the sort of tip of that pedestrian connection to Planning Area 3. So that is sort of the lot layout, planning area layout of the concept plan. But next, I would like to show you also the landscape plan. There's extensive landscape buffer requirements around the exterior of the site along the northeastern portion, which is the top in this image. A 20-foot landscape buffer is to be maintained with existing plantings along the southeastern limits, which is abutting the multiple-family homes and the QuickTrip over here on the right side of this exhibit. There is a 30-foot landscape buffer, which is made up of existing mature trees. Along Keller Road, which is the left side of this exhibit, there is a 50-foot wide landscape buffer, which in addition to maintaining existing mature trees, is to be planted with three trees and five shrubs for every 20 linear feet. The reasoning behind this is this is where the site is opposite to Chatham Manor Drive and Rosestone Place, which are existing single-family homes. And then along the south and southwestern portion of the site or the bottom here, there is a 100-foot wide landscape buffer, which is to be made up of existing mature trees. So that is the concept plan. We are recommending approval, but I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, we need a motion?
So moved.
Second?
A second, Wayne.
Okay, questions? No one? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it 6-0. And next, we've got PC 21 and 22-21 McBride Beara Land Company.
PC 21 and 22-21 McBride Beara Land Company is a PEU in the R4, and this is a site development plan for your approval. You can see here the 15 single-family detached lots as well as visitor parking towards the south of the site, two basins throughout in the development as well as a private access drive around the rear of the houses. Here you can see the proposed landscaping, including the trees for each of the individual lots. And this is the existing Walden Ridge sign, which will be used in place as an identifier for both the Towns at Walden Ridge, which is this development, as well as the existing Walden Ridge subdivision.
Okay, is that it?
Oh, yes, sorry.
That's all right. No problem, no problem. That's all right. No problem, no problem. We need a motion?
Like to make a motion for approval.
Second?
I'll second it, Lawler.
Discussion, anyone? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Eyes have it six zero. The last one is. PC two ninety-two dash eighty-seven Shell Oil Company. Essentially Starbucks.
Yes, PC two ninety-two dash eighty-seven Shell Oil Company is a C eight planned commercial district. This is in the former Waffle House. Portion of the C eight. Here you can see the site development plan. It's a Starbucks with a drive-through only, which is similar to the recently approved Telegraph Starbucks. And the site development plan, they're showing significant improvements to the site, including landscaping. Throughout the site. And so there will be no dine-in at this location. It's drive-through only. And so I would like to request a motion for approval.
Okay, we need a motion?
I'll make the motion for approval.
Discussion? Is this the same builder as the one proposed on Telegraph? Do we know?
I don't. It's not the same land developer.
Okay.
You know, it's still corporate Starbucks's design, I suppose.
Okay, what's the situation on Telegraph?
That one is still in site plan review.
Okay.
So that will, that will still have to come back to the commission for its final approval.
Okay. Seeing no questions, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Eyes have it six zero. And for the good of the order. Everyone should have the February, March. Planning Commission schedule, which. We appreciate.
So on the fourteenth, I think that we are, as long as everything goes right, we expect to have the, a new request for a QT down at Butler Hill. That has been circling about for a while. So that's going to be a public hearing on the fourteenth. There's another site very near that along Butler Hill. So there are going to be two petitions very near to one another on Butler Hill that evening. And we are also possibly thinking that we may have a public hearing on March twenty-eighth to have two of them in March. We have several petitions that are not yet ready for, that are not yet fully ready, but we have several applications in the department for, you know, for another public hearing. So we are, we are looking at the possibility of needing two in March. So we did want to just bring that to you this evening to let you know about that. Additionally, in addition to your, to your public hearing schedule, I did want to let the commission know. That the county council did recently pass an appropriation to the Department of Planning for. To conduct and to work through a comprehensive plan. So that has gone through the council. So it is going to be a request of mine that the commission consider. Forming a comprehensive plan committee to help shepherd this process. And to sort of be the individuals on the planning commission that would be those working most directly with us. On a regular basis as we move through this planning process. And this planning process will be, takes significant period of time. I know several of you have been through this process before. So I did want to bring that up for you alls, for your alls consumption. Additionally, at your last meeting, you did direct staff to work on your bylaws and bring you a draft of that. We will be bringing those to you at your meeting on the twenty-eighth. So we will have, we will have some drafts for you before that meeting. And then it will, we will leave it and have conversation with you about how, making some changes. From based on what we heard at your last meeting when we discussed this. So we're working on, on bringing a draft for you for your bylaws. Was there anything else of note for, to bring to the discussion for the commission, Mel?
I think you covered it.
Okay.
So the twenty-eighth, which one, February twentieth or March twenty-eighth?
March twenty-eighth, yeah. March is that odd month where the days are exactly aligned with February. So we do intend to have a draft for you prior to your meeting on the twenty-eighth. Either A for the commission to then just have conversation about it and direct us to make further changes. But we will have those for you to at least begin that conversation in two weeks.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it. Is that it, Jacob?
Uh, yeah, I think so.
Okay, with that, we need a motion to adjourn for four minutes.
So moved.
My second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it six zero and we'll see you in four minutes.